I'm organized.
Let's go.
We're ready.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County. It is February 8th, and good morning and welcome to your boardroom. If we could at this time have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks? Supervisor Michaels? Supervisor Flynn? And Supervisor Long?
Yes. I'd like to note for the record Supervisor Michaels is out of town on county business. At this time if we could rise for the invocation and welcome Pastor Dan Hall from the Church of the Nazarene of Ventura to greet us.
Heavenly Father, certainly these last four or five weeks have put a whole lot of stress and responsibility on this board. There had been some very unpredictable and even tragic events in this county. And yet God, I'm thankful today that we have a trust in them and recognize that they are doing the very best job possible with the resources available. And I know that everybody today is kind of reeling from the announcement of the federal budget. And I pray God that you would provide the resource and the wisdom for this board to do the very best job possible. And God, I pray that in this year ahead that your help and your wisdom and your strength will be a part of everything that happens in this room. Thank you, Father, for the blessing that you provide for us, and we do look to you for our hope and our help. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Supervisor Flynn, would you lead us?
Please start me in the flag salute. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please. Second. Thank you. There's been a motion and a second for the minutes of the meeting of our February 1st meeting. Seeing no objection to that, so ordered. Item six, agenda review. Mr. CEO.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm going to attempt to do this. There are only two items to change, but one of them's a little complicated. The first is simple. It's the consent item number 19 on the agenda. The listing needs to be, to add the name Maury Navarro for the Parks Advisory Commission. This is for a vacancy that is coming up. And then there's an off-agenda request. This is the complicated one. I may call on the county council to help me with this. Off-agenda request, that would be item 37. The Public Works Agency Watershed Protection District Cooperative Agreement with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Services for emergency flood prevention projects at Coyote Creek, Thatcher Creek, Fresno Creek, and Canyatta Larga Creek. The board will need to take a motion to add this matter to the agenda to be heard today, and there will be approximately a five-minute staff report that will accompany it.
Okay. Any other agenda?
You did great. I would add one other thing. Your board must find by a four-fifths vote, there is a need to take immediate action, and the need for action came to the attention of officials after the posting of the agenda.
Thank you. I did well. You did great.
Let's edit them for agenda review.
Right.
Okay.
Is there some backup on the item on the appointment to the Park Advisory Board? I don't have it here.
Actually, the item in your packet is correct. It's just that the agenda item only title on the agenda was incorrect.
Oh, I see.
So the letter is actually from me.
Okay, thank you.
That the board accepts the resignation of Maury.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett, you had something on agenda review?
Yes. Thank you. I would just like to ask that we pull item 13. I don't have any problem with it. I just would like to discuss it after we do the consent calendar so I could make comments. And then I would include pulling that and the addition of item 37 with the language suggested by both county council and CEO as my motion.
Motion and a second. An objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. So we have pulled for discussion item 13. We have added Maury Navarro to item 19, and we've added item 37 to the agenda. Okay. Let's have a discussion then on 13.
Thank you. I really just wanted to not have this just slip through under consent and not have comments out there. Couple of years ago, we, the board adopted a policy to try to have the county wherever possible move to fuel-efficient hybrid cars. Our county policy at that point, ten, that was recommended to us, the evidence seems to suggest that it was a good policy, which was that when it comes to compact cars, compact cars are still the more efficient purchase because of the lower purchase price. But when it comes to the midsize, the medium-sized sedans, the hybrids are the more effective, more efficient car for us to purchase. Looking forward to getting more information on that, but I don't think there's any question that two years ago, we made the right decision when you look at what's happening with oil cost, with the tremendous fluctuations, and all of our calculations, I think will be, will probably be looked at as conservative two years ago when you factor in the higher and higher fuel costs that we will continue to see happening here. But I don't think if people in this country are not getting ready for an energy crisis that will be very severe, I think we'll be making a mistake. So I applaud our policy. I hope that it will demonstrate some leadership for other people in Ventura County also. Thank you.
Certainly agree with those comments. All right, then consent item agendas. Item seven are before us.
Move the item.
Motion and a second on the consent items. Any objection to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered. This time we'll move to public comment. Are there any cards submitted for public comment, Madam Clerk? Thank you. The agenda notes the procedure set out for citizen presentations to the board, and just for the record, Carol Dean Williams, Mr. Williams?
Carol Dean Williams, a 59-year resident Ventura County. I feel love in the air. And not only is love in the air, love is present today. Our elected auditor controller. A honeymoon? Sure. You know, it takes only one date full of energy, energy to stay up late. Realize now, energy in a bar, energy to honeymoon, energy without bars. Two dates, what would it mean? Energy, energy to come back home clean. Realize now, energy is a bar. I will eat one date, send kisses from afar. Two kisses, one honeymoon, oh, sweet dessert upon Christine's plate. Ah, three kisses when they met, one, two, three, honeymoon by jet. You know, it takes only one date. How many kisses to stay up late? Congratulations, Christine. I have worked with the auditor's office on the inventory that's required by the government code, and she has responded to me on stolen county property in the control and possession of the sheriff's department. My next project is to identify the stolen or missing items in the district attorney's office. I'm a little surprised that I did get an answer, but Ms. Cohen gave me an answer to my request and did a very excellent job. I'm a little bit not understanding the process because the board of supervisors wasn't CC'd on that letter. And so, I'm going to have to sit down with her and have her explain because her office has set up a fraud hotline. Now, I don't know if fraud comes under the definition of stolen property, but it's still my opinion based upon the facts that this property within the possession and control of the sheriff is being stolen by sheriff employees. And a few years back, there was a deputy that stole a laptop computer, and he was prosecuted for that. And Chief Kip told me he didn't think that was the computer that was on the list. On the letter from Ms. Cohen dated January 27, 2005, asset 78165 worth $3,132. According to the sheriff's department, this asset was stolen, subsequently an arrest and prosecution for the theft took place. So, I'm going to try to get the public information on who this was because he said he did not believe that this was the sheriff deputy that I'm referring to that stole the laptop and was prosecuted. So, I think it's time that the sheriff and the DA did accounting. It's right there on the inventory list. And the sheriff has really sanitized his inventory list now. If you compare this year's inventory list to past years, he has really sanitized it. So, the question I have now, is he doing his inventory correctly? I worked for one company for 23 years, and we did inventory. It was unacceptable to say we had parts missing. But the inventory report is missing, 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 unable to locate. And it's been going on for three years. This is just boggles the mind that government can do this, but private industry can't do this. It's not good business. And now he's sanitizing his reports.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Lynn Krieger?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Lynn Krieger from the County Harbor Department. And I'm here this morning just because I have the happy responsibility to advise the board that this is the 40th anniversary year of Channel Islands Harbor. 1965, Memorial Day weekend is when the adventure for the county started.
The adventure.
We're coming to the end of the first generation, as you all know. I have with me this morning, which I don't normally do, but Michelle Gilmore. Go raise your hand. Who is the marketing coordinator for the harbor. All of those calendars of events you see in your office, the rack cards, the posters for events, and the events that you may attend from time to time, that's her responsibility. She carries a very heavy load on her shoulders. And I wanted you to know that she's also going to be carrying it this year, and so if there are questions, I want to give her credit. Please call her or me anytime. And Carol Abella is here because she, as always, keeps a firm eye on the money and on all of our activities. For this 40th anniversary, we'll be having a whole series of special events running from Memorial Day all the way through the Parade of Lights. And the yacht clubs have already selected the theme "Thanks for the Memories" this year, so that'll be really appropriate. The range of events will be everything from reinstituting the kids' fishing derbies that we had for so many years with lots of families participating and great prizes, to some very large-scale events that we'll be announcing to you and to the public as the year goes by. There'll also be a number of concerts this summer, so we'll keep you informed. I'm hoping you'll be able to come down and enjoy. There is one very special gala dinner that we have planned in part to recognize the board, including your predecessors for all of the work that they have done, and to recognize our commissioners and the Army Corps of Engineers and others who have done so much work to make this harbor stay together. So, we'll look forward to honoring you, all of you, at that. The Harbor Foundation and the Harbor Commissioners, along with the Lessies and the yacht clubs, are really working hard. This is a good opportunity for all of us to put our shoulder to the same wheel, work together, and I think it'll be fun. Part of my reason for coming today, instead of just doing this in a memo, is that we do have a logo for our 40th anniversary year that you'll be seeing appear everywhere. I'll pass this up. Again, feel free to ask for it. If you have any publications that it would be useful for, and I'm honored to be here for this special year for the harbor. Also, a quick reminder, tomorrow we have two tall ships arriving at noon, the Lady Washington and the Bill of Rights. So, if you're able to come, it's always still to me a thrill to see those tall ships come around the harbor entrance and sail in. That's all. Nothing problematic today.
Well, that's, thank you. That's wonderful, wonderful news and celebration time ahead for us. Do you have an idea of the approximate time for the gala dinner or event?
We'll be consulting with your offices to make sure you can all, probably sometime around Memorial Day, sometime in May. We're looking at May because that was the grand opening of the harbor, and we'd like to keep it around the same time.
All right.
But we'll make sure you can all come.
Great. Thank you, Lynn. Any other comments or questions for Lynn? Thank you. Alan Sanders?
Morning.
Good morning, Chairwoman Long. Good morning to the board. My name's Alan Sanders, and I'm here today representing the Sierra Club and Ormond Beach Observers. What brings me here is late last week, I became informed that there was a project working its way through the county down at Ormond Beach. And as some of you know, the Sierra Club and Ormond Beach Observers, the Ormond Beach Task Force have collectively been involved in Ormond Beach issues for many, many years, and yet, none of us had any information about this. I got to talk to someone with your county planning staff on Friday and exchanged some information and was informed that there's a hearing coming up on the 17th. What I didn't find out was that there was actually an open comment period that closed yesterday. And, but I found that out Saturday, and I was able to get some very short comments in, but I had no documents to rely on. So, I guess the message is there's a failure to communicate, and I think this is somewhat serious because I know the board is familiar with many of the citizens who have been working on Ormond Beach issues. And I know some of your county departments are aware of this as well. There was a process, I don't know, about a year ago with the Water Protection District, and they came and spoke to the Ormond Beach Task Force, and we were all well-informed about what was going on with the project. Nevertheless, it's somewhat embarrassing to those of us who are interested in Ormond that a project of this dimensions could be moving forward without any dialogue with the county. And my understanding is there's probably going to be some postponement as far as closing the comment period. I'm still not up to speed on that. I still have no documents. But I've provided official requests on behalf of the club many years ago and do get noticed most of the time. But in this event was not, and this is an item that may be appealed, may come before you later. And I need to get documents. So, I hope that the board can take some action to make sure that those of us who requested to be notified can get notified. There's another action that's working its way through the county. It involves projects at Rincon Bridges. And the Sierra Club was an appellant on these projects some years ago, and actually, I appeared before the board on those. This is a Caltrans project, and Caltrans is the lead agency, the county's only responsible agency. But Caltrans intentionally did not notify the Sierra Club that they had revised the project and were moving it forward. Apparently, they felt that we wouldn't change our minds, so they didn't let us know. They admitted that before Santa Barbara County Council. And the issue there is, there's no fault on the part of the county, but the county does need to know that when it's acting as the responsible agency, that the lead agency has performed due diligence in informing the public. In any event, regarding Shoreline Organics, let me inform you, there's some fear on the part of those of us who are involved in Ormond issues that this is the next Halico. There was just an article yesterday in the Ventura County Star saying that Halico in Oxnard has gone bankrupt and is not operational. But now we have another blight upon Ormond Beach and everything that we are collectively trying to do down there. So, if we could share information, I think we'd all be further ahead. Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Bennett?
I have one question. I got a call about this yesterday, so I'm trying to investigate. I did not know anything about this thing coming forward, but you said a hearing on the 17th.
That's what I understand.
Okay, 17th is a Thursday. Okay, so it's a Planning Director hearing?
Yes.
All right, okay, great. Thank you.
Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, you're quite right about the issue. I didn't know anything about this particular project. I did write a letter asking for a continuance of it, and I think that will happen.
Thank you, Supervisor Flynn.
Okay, we have no further public comments submitted. Are there board comments at this time? Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. Yes, I do have my board comment. One, just to alert you that on the agenda today, we have the opportunity to recognize a special group that we had originally scheduled, and then they got very actively involved in the flood operation. But my specific comment for this morning deals with the fact that we saw the president's budget come out. And I think that you combine the president's budget with the potential for an economic downturn based on the large budget deficits that we already are incurring. I think that we have to constantly be gritting ourselves for problems, particularly problems in terms of funding our county hospital, our clinic program, et cetera. If they are going to be making the kind of cuts in public health that they are proposing in the president's budget, the ripple effects down to us will be, I think, pretty severe. And it will be those people dependent upon our public health system that will really be dramatically impacted. Which my other comment is, the way we have set up healthcare in the United States, I think there's some recent articles in the newspaper that highlighted it very well. It is, it's something that we should all realize that all of us are a heartbeat away from not having our insurance cover us. All of us ultimately are dependent upon having a viable public health system out there and for everybody from a medical standpoint because you're one bankruptcy, you're one slip, you're one major illness away from losing your healthcare coverage and becoming dependent. So, today just reminded me of how fragile our setup is and how challenging it's going to be for us to continue to provide excellent healthcare through our public hospital and clinic system as we look at the president's budget. Thank you.
Do you have any adjourned memories?
I have my adjourned memory. I do, thank you very much. And I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Thank you.
You're welcome. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on my list, which I submit to the clerk.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention to the board about the water quality issues that are facing the east county of Ventura County. The Triumphal Sanitation District is in a joint powers authority agreement with the Los Virginas Municipal Water District, and together they are part owners in the Tapia Reclamation Plant. And the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board has a lot of concerns about the water quality going into Malibu Creek and has come up with some very strict requirements about water that is released into the creek. And as a result, this agency, excuse me, this joint powers authority is desperately looking for other alternatives to having to do some incredibly expensive treatment in order to treat water going into the creek. Potable water under the guidelines being proposed by the Regional Water Quality Control Board would actually be prohibited from going in the creek because it wouldn't be clean enough. So, we have some strong concerns with the amount of cleaning the water will have to take. And there have been some, actually kind of boneheaded suggestions on what could be done with the water. Recently, the Triumphal Sanitation District has suggested four alternatives. One, taking the water out of the aquifer under Amundson Ranch, which has the potential contaminants from rockodine in it, and then filling it up with reclaimed water instead of putting it in the creek. The latest suggestion was to actually put it under rockodine with the thought that maybe it could dilute the contaminants under rockodine. And then they went looking for a grant to put, to pipe the water into a confined aquifer in Simi that is in that area in the neighborhood where the water bubbles up and comes out of the ground with the idea that, well, the water coming out of the ground could then be cleaner if they put this reclaimed water in. And then their fourth proposal was to pipe it over to Thousand Oaks and have it go into the storm drains and creeks in Thousand Oaks out to. the storm drains and creeks in Thousand Oaks out to Cuyahoga. And I just bring this to our attention because I think really what we have to do is look regionally on how we can address our, address these issues of water quality and how to use water. And my position is we need to reuse it as much as possible and efforts need to be put underway and goals need to be established, that we look at putting, you know, use reclaimed water for irrigation purposes, for landscaping and golf courses. But right now, there's a lot of concern, and I have a lot of concern with the types of alternatives that are being looked at because of the very high quality or high standards that the regional board is pushing on the Tapia Treatment Plant. So, I'm just bringing that to your attention. It's interesting, but there's some very concerning proposals out there, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. And then also, I would like the Board to close and honor the people on this list, and I'd like to call one person out. His name is George Steve Cardwell, and he's a veteran from the World War II. He worked at Hughes Aircraft, was, went through the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Academy at the age of 50, but worked for the Los Angeles Unified School District. He was the past president of the local ETI Equestrian Trails Organization. And he also shared grand marshal of the Cano Valley Days honors with Bill Holloway. So, I wanted to mention him specifically and that the loss of these individuals will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I might, if I might quickly, on the Ormond Beach Shoreline Organics issue that is in the 3rd District and the Director of Planning, it's the Director of Planning CUP process. I'm certainly been fully briefed on the file and what will be before the Planning Director. The Planning Director, I expect, will grant some additional time if, for the constituency outside of the normal noticing area. And it will, again, is a Planning Director hearing process. But certainly, the Board, the information is public and the proposal in a conditional use permit process. My office and I am certainly reviewing the information and taking comments from the folks who are communicating to my office on the proposal. The, last week, I was up at the CSAC meeting for the Board of Directors and the Government Finance Operations Policy Committee that I chair presented the pension reform principles and preamble to the Board of Directors. And frankly, the most of the meeting was focused on the reform proposal. Assemblymember Keith Richmond did speak to the Board of Directors, as did the representative from the State Association of Firefighters. And as you can anticipate, there's a lot of disagreement. There is agreement, I think, on some basic principles of pension reform in that there certainly has been very noted abuse of some pension retirement actions, but, and there's an interest by all bodies to address that and see where reform, in fact, could help facilitate for the public good and for the health of the pension funds to eliminate abuse and provide some better checks and balances. The Board of Directors basically took the proposed principles and concept and sent, to be sent back out statewide to all of the counties and CEOs and our Retirement Board for review and comment. I must say that there is great interest building behind Assemblymember Richmond's proposal. The Governor has commented on it and is very interested in the work that CSAC is doing. I found it a little frustrating that there aren't other, or to date, there haven't been other organizations who have been looking at commenting on the proposals, evaluating them, looking at alternatives. And that was frustrating both for the Assemblymen. So far, the CSAC, the League has some conceptual comments, but that's about it. And the Assemblyman was very frustrated with what he felt was a partisan neglect of dialogue on his proposal for pension reform, specifically to the Democratic side of the aisle. So, it was an interesting two hours of discussion. I will provide to all of you the concept that's truly just in a concept stage for principles and issues related to the reform proposal, but I can assure you that it's a living document at this point, very much in the concept stage, and will have significant, I expect significant input statewide before you, before there actually may be a final document of position by CSAC or the League or anyone at this point. There are four or five bills that are tracking proposed reform pieces, and there, as I said, is great interest by lots of, lots of folks on this issue. I would like to put forward a list for adjourned memory and call out one particular, very, very, very special person to our community who we lost last week, Julie Irving. Just a wonderful, wonderful advocate for children, truly the leader for the Child Development Resources Organization, both in programs and services for children and families in our community. She was a director for 14 years. She was one of the original commissioners for the first five of Ventura County. She really has been the leader, the passionate advocate for preschool for all program to launch and, in fact, had launched a committee to work on the preschool for all in our county. She was one of those folks that wherever there was an issue dealing with children, there was Julie Irving. Her love and passion for children and for those in need was just a part of her very being. She was a true spirit of good, goodness in the sense that Julie never had a harsh word to say about anyone. She always approached life from a very positive, heartfelt, and good position. She was a dear friend. We will miss her. And now we'll move to, we've got some time here, Board, so we'll move ahead with our agenda. That concludes Board comments, as I believe, unless there are others. We'll move to, we've moved our consent items, so we will now, at this time, take on Item 26, which is the Human Services Agency. Is there someone here on this item? Ratification approval of a grant agreement with low-income investment funds for the Constructing Connections Program to develop childcare resources in Ventura County. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Long, members of the Board.
Would you pull the mic down a little bit so I can hear you? Thank you.
I'm Melissa Livingston, the Deputy Director for Administrative Services for the Human Service Agency. This morning-
May I, May I, can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. This morning before your Board, we're requesting ratification and approval of a grant award agreement with the Low Income Investment Fund. In July of this past year of 2004, we came before your Board for ratification and approval of the submittal of the grant application from the Human Service Agency's Office of Work family with the Low Income Investment Fund. The Low Income Investment Fund is a national community development financial institution that provides affordable capital and technical assistance in such areas as housing, childcare, and education. The grant proposal that was submitted was reflecting the need for ongoing support of planning efforts for childcare capacity building in the county, in addition to collaboration with our key partners in the county in childcare advocacy. First Five Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County, Child Development Resources, Childcare Planning, and the Workforce Investment Board. The Local Income Investment Fund has approved our grant proposal for approximately $169,000. The grant will be awarded over a three-year period of time. There's also a required match of approximately $93,000 that will be covered within the Human Service Agency's Work Family budget with existing staff who will have project oversight for this initiative. The expected deliverables that will come from this grant over this three-year period is an assessment of the community's childcare needs, a catalog of local resources that support facility financing and development, an inventory of local barriers to childcare facility development, a detailed plan to overcome local barriers to childcare facility development, including policy recommendations at the local and at the regional government levels. And at least one new facility will be constructed in providing childcare within this three-month, this three-year period of time. In addition to that one facility, there will be a stream of other facilities that are in ongoing development during that three-year period of time. HSA would like to request and recommend that your Board approve the grant agreement with the Low Income Investment Fund to increase support and planning for childcare capacity in Ventura County. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer those for you.
Questions?
All right.
Supervisor, can we put your button? Supervisor Bennett?
Just, this is a critical need here, this whole issue of childcare. I'm trying to make sure we have adequate childcare for parents that are trying to juggle this thing. First Five is also very interested in this, so will you be coordinating with First Five or sharing this information with First Five?
Absolutely. They are a collaborative partner that is identified in this proposal. They are also the funding source.
Good, thank you.
Supervisor Flynn?
Right, I agree with your comments on Julie Irving. When I knew her, when I first knew her, she was called Sister Julie.
That's right.
And then that changed. She was a wonderful human being. So, in light of that, I kind of am reluctant to make any critical comments on this issue that is before us. But it does seem kind of vague, some of the expected deliveries. And above that, on Page 3, influence land use policy to encourage childcare facilities development. Taking into consideration, the county doesn't have very much development. This is really a responsibility of the cities. But my main concern is this, that we're already doing a lot of this. And Supervisor Bennett just talked this morning about the budget issues that President Bush is presenting and Governor Schwarzenegger and so forth. But it seems to me, we've got to start being more and more careful about how we spend money, how we request money, and so forth. I think the items are a little bit too vague for me on this. I know we have a need, but I'd rather see the money go directly to providing that need. And I don't think this will. So, because of the vagueness, because of the fact that we, at the local level, need to look at things more carefully as far as money, projects, projects that cost money, I'm going to have to vote against it.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. And I note that in addition to childcare, the same grant could be used, I believe, for affordable housing and education. And as, I understand that this is to study ways that we can get childcare facilities through land use and, that's pretty, is that pretty much the basis of this?
Correct, it's for capacity building, yes.
I'm not clear on what the match is and how that match will be.
The match is leveraging existing resources within the Human Service Agency's Work Family. They're fully funded resources and they're existing resources that are advocates for childcare in our community and working with all the collaboratives that have been mentioned. They will continue to be leveraged as it relates to implementation of this grant.
It's a, is it $168,000?
It's $168,000 for a three-year period of time.
Can you tell me what the match is? That's what I'm wondering.
The match is actually staff time.
Oh, it is, it isn't a cost?
It's, a large percentage of that is actual staff time and materials that may be produced by our Office of Work family.
Is the $23,000 that's mentioned, the cost in staff time?
The $23,000 is, includes a proration of the actual grant amount and then the cost, well, there's no cost of the staff time, I'm sorry. The $168,000 is the grant amount. The match is outside of the $168,000.
And could you tell, again, I'm having a little problem with getting some clarity on number two, when you're looking at the fiscal impacts, it says there's going to be an increase in intergovernmental revenue of $23,000.
Mm-hmm.
Is that money that's an expense out or an expense?
That is the expense of the grant itself.
Okay, so that is what it will cost the county for the grant?
For the first-
Is that for the first year? So, what will it cost the county for the full grant?
$168 over a three-year period, and the three-year period commences on February 1st of this year.
The $168 is money that we'll get from the grant?
Yes, correct.
The $23,000 is money that we get from the grant or it's outgoing to get?
It's from the grant.
Okay.
The money that's prefaced here is from the grant.
Okay, so there is-
Going back up to the $168,000.
Okay, and when I'm reading this, it looks like there is a match, but you're saying the match is going to come from revenue that the HSA already has?
Within the Human Service Agency.
And how much is that?
It's 90, approximately $93,000 over the three-year period of time of leveraging those resources.
Now, HSA's match is about $93,000 for this grant?
For the three-year period of time, correct. Those are actually staff resources.
Is that in this report?
The, there's an identification of the number, the $93,000 is associated with the budgeted staff. It's identified in the narrative on Page 3.
May I, I'm concerned if Supervisor Flynn is going to vote against this, and it needs a forfeit's vote. What I'd like to do is get some more questions answered. I'm still not clear from reading the report, the information that's being provided. Could I ask that we continue this item to our next meeting? And that, will that be a problem for you in terms of moving forward with this?
This grant has been delayed since December because we're having problems, difficulties with the grant entity and coordinating it. But it's, I think it's important that you be provided clarity as well as Supervisor Flynn's need to better understand the actual activities that we're going to engage in. I think we can create some more clarity potentially.
I would appreciate that. When I see the indirects costs are minimal and all that, and then I hear $93,000, so I'd just like to get some more questions answered. I don't think here's the place. So, if I may, can I go ahead and move that we continue this to our next meeting?
Second.
The motion is a second. Thing of no objection to that. I appreciate it, too. I would hope that we can get questions answered on this and the funding source being First Five State of California, those are dollars separate from the state of California. So, I would hope that we could look at this and get our questions answered. Seeing no objection to that, we'll continue this one week.
Okay.
Thank you. Item 27, ratification approval of a sub-grant agreement with the State of California Workforce Investment Board to operate a demonstration project. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Johnston. My name is Amy Fonzo, Executive Director of the Workforce Investment Board. On behalf of the Human Services Agency and the Workforce Investment Board, we're here this morning to request your approval of several recommendations. The first of which is to accept the first installment of a five-year grant award to serve youth with disabilities in the amount of $68,000. This grant will serve 120 youth with disabilities ranging from substance abuse to mental and physical handicaps. And it will also serve youth that have not been previously or currently being served under the WIA programs. This grant will also establish and develop a policy and procedure manual for the one-stop staff. It will complete a youth with disabilities resource mapping project, leveraging the new 2-1-1 database. It will establish two business advisory councils, one in East County and one in West County. And it will ultimately provide a sustainable process by which to serve our youth with disabilities here in the county. The second request is to approve a contract with work training programs in the amount of $55,800 to serve as the intermediary of this project. Work training programs has a 40-year history- Work Training Programs has a 40-year history here in the county of serving individuals with disabilities. We're also asking that you authorize the Agency Director Ted Myers to modify the contract, and lastly, for the Auditor Controller's Office to make the appropriate accounting transactions to accept this first installment. I have with me Phil Bohan from the Administrative Services Department of the Agency if you have any questions.
The questions? Supervisor Flynn?
On work training program, you say that's an intermediary? I don't understand. I know the word, but how does that work there?
Under this grant, they identified any partner that you identify in the grant application as an intermediary. And basically, they're to act as the navigator, if you will, to help in the transition of these youths into employment and training programs or to other organizations that can address their needs.
So this is kind of setting up, if you will, a new bureaucracy to help run this grant?
We certainly hope not.
That's what it kind of sounds like to me a little bit. I'll keep thinking about it.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I think it's wonderful to be able to assist disabled youth and getting them into the workforce and hopefully getting them to become independent adults. And my question is, what kind of disabilities are we referring to? Physical or?
It's a wide spectrum. It's everything from mental disabilities such as depression to actual physical and mental handicaps, visually and hearing impaired individuals, for example.
Autistic children maybe, too? As they become adults?
I believe so. That was listed.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'll move approval.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? Objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we see if we can do item 28? We've got a couple minutes yet for request to approve additional appropriations from unanticipated revenue for the Ventura County Library. Our librarians, Derrit Christman, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. The Ventura County Library has been lucky enough to receive some unanticipated revenue at this time of the year. We received an additional amount of funding from the California Literacy Campaign, which will serve to augment our existing program, a bequest, which is designated for the Foster Library, specifically for art materials there, and a wonderful grant from Verizon, which went to the Friends of the Pruder Library in Port Juaniemi. The Friends are delighted and have passed this on to the library to establish a teen center at the Pruder Library.
I'd like to move the recommended action and congratulate you for continuing to keep trying to patch things together with the library district.
There's a motion and a second.
I'd just like to comment that, yeah, you really do an excellent job with the libraries, considering the money issue and so forth. I'm very pleased that you are in this position.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to be able to get some information out there to the public about what kind of state finances our county libraries are in. Maybe if we do it through a workshop or have some information, just identifying, as I understand, there are some libraries that are not being able to be open full-time and...
Supervisor Parks, if I might, that's an excellent segue. On March 1st, you'll see on our advanced calendar at 10:00 a.m., there will be a study session regarding the state of our Ventura County Library.
Excellent.
The Director and I talked about and worked on and put this on calendar, so we can have that public discussion.
That's wonderful. I look forward to it. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second on this item. Any further discussion? Objection to the motion? Seeing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good work. Good work. Okay. Shall we, let me look here. I'm going to squeeze out one more. Item 29, which is Appointment of Library Trustee to Fill Vacancy on the Blanchard-San Antipola Library District. Mr. Browning, good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I'm Gene Browning, Assistant Registrar of Voters, and this item is basically request, requesting your appointment of Ms. Sculte to the short-term position of the Blanchard-San Antipola Public Library District. It was a short term that became open when the previous incumbent was elected to a full-term position as a result of the November election.
Questions?
We're recommended action.
Motion and a second and objection to the motion. Seeing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can get back to work. Thank you. I know you have work to do. Okay. It is 9:30, and we are on time, I believe, for our first presentation of this morning, and I'm very pleased to be able to present this. And welcome to the boardroom and to the front dais, if I might, David Smith, the President and CEO of United Way of Ventura County, and Charles Watson, President and CEO of Interface Children Family Services. And that is today to provide board resolution that's going to acknowledge the launching, the official launching of Ventura County 2-1-1. And February is Ventura County 2-1-1 Month. We are the first county in the state to officially launch this program off the ground. And Interface Children Family Services and United Way have developed this partnership to really support the 2-1-1 Information Telephone Service, which will be a countywide service available to the public 24/7 whenever they're in need of information, referrals and connections to services available in our county. The nonprofit organizations of United Way and Interface have worked diligently over this last year-plus to deliver this vital health and human service information referral service to the thousands of our Ventura County residents. In fact, the paper said today, over 800,000 now in our county. 2-1-1 service is available to more than 100 million Americans in 30 states, but again, we are the first county in this state to make it available to the public. It is through the efforts of these two wonderful organizations that have, again, put lots of work into getting this accomplished for the month of February, for the 11th day of February in the year 2005. 2-1-1 will provide support for domestic violence referrals, important support for social service, support to residents who call in time of crisis and disaster. Not to be confused with 911, which is a disaster call, or 411, which is our general information call. 2-1-1 is that easy-to-remember phone number and source that, again, will connect you up with services and programs for families and support system in our county. So it is with pleasure that I'm able to provide on behalf of the board recognition to both the United Way of Ventura County and to Interface Children Family Services for this wonderful accomplishment of making 2-1-1 system a reality in our county and proclaim this 8th day of February as the month for Ventura County 2-1-1 Month. And I'd like to step down and present this and offer an opportunity for our CEOs to comment on the excellent work that they have undertaken. Mr. Watson, you're going to do this, so Mr. Watson will, and Supervisor Bennett?
Could I just mention one thing before you, as you get ready to go down? Mr. Watson has contacted my office about 2-1-1, and they're interested in the potential use of some county facilities, et cetera. I wanted to get back with him tomorrow before he came today, I mean, yesterday before he came today, and it wasn't able to happen, but I just wanted to pass on to you that I have talked to the CEO, and they are going to try to work and find a collaborative win-win solution for everybody. No guarantees, but they're certainly going to try to work on that, so I wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Terrific. That's great news. On behalf of all the residents of Ventura County, I want to thank the board for your support for the 2-1-1 service. I think that this is an absolutely brilliant moment for Ventura County, being first in the state, I think is evidence of how Ventura County really works well together. 2-1-1 is a service that requires a lot of agencies to work well, to be prepared, to be connected, to help people who are in need get what they really need as quickly and as humanly possible. United Way has been a terrific partner. First Five of Ventura County has been a terrific partner. Making 2-1-1 available to the citizens of Ventura County has been an interesting process. I won't bore you with all the technological details and weird stories, but to tell you that the telephone companies, SBC and Verizon, have been hard at work helping us to institute the technological way that this works, not without some moments. One of those moments has been the fact that as we're in the middle of this process, that there are a number of calls that we get that, in the end, don't really belong to us. Because 2-1-1 is only three digits of a phone number, some people do hesitate as they're calling a regular number between the 2-1-1 and the next number just long enough for the switch to catch it and send it over to us. So we're, the telephone company's been working really hard to help correct that issue. It's a known issue in other areas that have 2-1-1. We will be up and running on February 11th, that's this Friday. The switches have been in place now two to three weeks, two weeks for one service and three weeks for the other. We're working all the bugs out. I'm sure that there will be other little funny things that happen to us along the way, but it's going to really be a terrific service for Ventura County and the people. And I have to say just one more time how proud I am that Ventura is number one.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and certainly, United Way shares in the excitement with Chuck Watson and Interface that we are the first county to go live with 2-1-1. It's, it really is, it's a huge accomplishment. And I often use the word collaboration during our United Way meetings and Service Club presentations and so forth as the key word from my perspective in how we have reached the point where we are today with 2-1-1. Because without collaboration, organizations like Interface, United Way, and First Five, Human Service Agency, and the private sector, working together, 2-1-1 would not be a reality. Two of my staff members are with me today, Diana Momquist and Ed Lyon, who have had the lead role over the last nine months or so in going out into the community to talk to individuals, businesses, corporations in our, in Ventura County, to encourage them to get involved with 2-1-1 from a financial standpoint. And our fundraising efforts have been unique in our model for 2-1-1 compared to 2-1-1 efforts around the state and elsewhere in the country. And we've been very successful because of the collaborative spirit that exists in this community, in the Ventura County community, a community that really believes in the value of Interface and the value of United Way. And I think 2-1-1 is, will prove the increased value of both organizations. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, we got a photo on.
All right.
Hold up those results. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Good job.
If I may, I just really want to thank both Interface and United Way and others who collaborated on this. I really think a lot of people will be helped as a result of this, people in crisis, but you don't need a police officer, you need to find out where you can go, can call 2-1-1. Employers, people and other agencies can find out more information where they can refer people to. It's just, it's a wonderful resource. And I know sometimes when you're in a crisis situation, you don't have the faculties to look up and try to figure out where you need to go, and being able to dial 2-1-1 is going to be a great resource. People who may not otherwise go for assistance will be able to get it, and I really thank you all for putting this together.
Supervisor Parks, thank you. In case I wasn't very clear, services that you'll be able to reach through 2-1-1, it is those basic human needs, services for food, clothing, shelter, mental health resources, drug and alcohol intervention and rehabilitation, employment support including job training, transportation assistance, support for older Americans and persons with disabilities, childcare, legal help, hospice care, et cetera. It truly is going to be that fully rounded resource referral, 2-1-1. Thank you so much for your good work in getting this to our county as a first. Congratulations. Thank you. And now we'll move to item number 21, which is again a 9:30 time certain item, and I'd like to welcome to the boardroom David Friedlander, President of Partnerships for Safe Families. And on our agenda, you have been provided a background of the Partnership for Safe Families and their annual report. This is another wonderful collaborative group that's been working to really provide services and look at programs and outreach to promote a community committed to safe, healthy and peaceful families. Welcome, Mr. Friedlander, and you're going to give us an update on your annual report.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure being here. Again, one more opportunity to test my Toastmaster skills, which I don't like, I don't do very well. First, I'd like to say, you know, how much I appreciate being a part of the Partnership for Safe Families and how appreciative I am of my organization, Kids and Families Together, that allows me to spend the time doing what we do for Partnership for Safe Families. And I know many of the other partners feel the same way. As you know, as I believe you know, the partnership includes the state mandated Child Abuse Prevention Council or the CAPC, so we do have some mandated things that we need to do, which I'll be talking about in a couple of minutes. The partnership formed about three years ago when several organizations came together, and that would be the Child Abuse Prevention Council, the CAPC, the Ventura County Domestic Violence Task Force, and the Ventura County Family Violence Prevention Partnership. And then we also formed a strategic alliance with the Ventura County Adult Abuse Prevention Council. So we really do cover abuse across the lifespan, and we're very proud of our accomplishments this year. Some of the highlights are our growing membership. We've had just an exploding membership this year. We have over 50 organizations. I think on the side of the report that we submitted, you'll see a list of those 50 organizations, and it really is a who's who's of Ventura County. And then we have several dozen individual members also. So we're very excited, and when we have our membership meetings, we usually have 50 to 60 people there, and it's just a wonderful time of sharing and networking and collaboration. And everybody, I think, really likes being there, so it's really a good example of collaboration. We also did our Abuse Across the Lifespan Conference this year, which we were very proud of. It was a two-day event. The first day event was with the Adult Abuse Prevention Council, and that was called the Crime of Dignity: Financial Abuse of Elder Independent Adults. There were about 100 participants there, and it was just a really great day to learn about the FAST team and what they do. Day two was the connection between perinatal substance abuse and family violence, and family violence research to practice, and that was with Dr. Bruce Perry and Dr. Ira Chasnov. A wonderful day where they presented their findings, and in the afternoon, we had a wonderful dialogue with many of our county leaders. We appreciate that. The CEO, Johnny Johnston, was there all day, and we really appreciated that. And we're also very proud that that led to the Community Commission really starting a task force on the whole issue of perinatal substance abuse, and that continues, that work continues on. We had many cosponsors for that. We had the California Attorney General, we had First Five Ventura County, the Human Service Agency, Child Abuse Training and Technical Assistance, CADA, and the Community College Fostering and Kindship Care Education Program. So we really had a lot of support, and there were many others. Those were just our main ones. We also were able to do two mandated reporter trainings in the county that were actually trained, the trainer trainings, and so we trained approximately 100 new mandated reporters, and most of those are trainers who actually go on to train other mandated reporters. And we also were able to provide a training for faith leaders. The name of this training was Enhancing Collaboration: Increasing Action in Preventing Domestic Violence in California, a Workshop for Domestic Violence Advocates and Faith Community Leaders. This training also continues on. We were pleased to do that. Something else that's exciting happened last year that the partnership was a part of, and that's the CAPC part of the partnership. We were part of an initiative by the Office of Child Abuse and Prevention, OCAP, to form what we're calling the Coastal Tri-Counties Child Abuse Prevention Coalition, and that is with our counterparts in Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County. And so it's a wonderful... And so it's a wonderful opportunity, again, for information sharing, and we meet once a month and have just really a nice relationship with our other counties. So we're very excited about that. I can't talk about what we did last year without talking a little bit about what we're doing now in this year. And I just want to mention a couple of those highlights. I mentioned one of our mandated jobs as the CAPC is to work on a three-year plan for the CAPIT funds. That's the Child Abuse Prevention Intervention and Treatment. And so now we're currently working with the Human Service Agency on a three-year plan for that funding, when that funding comes down. So we will have that done in three or four months. We are expanding our mandated reporter training. We are again having to train the trainers, but we've also are doing an outreach and providing training to the health, faith, and higher education communities. So that's an expansion of that program. And we're very excited about our conference this year, Abuse Across the Lifespan, which is the main title. We're still working on the subtitle. It's going to be April 20th, so I'd appreciate if you put that down in your books, because it's really important to have community leaders there. We're going to have Dr. Vincent Faletti. He's going to be presenting his A-study, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences, and that studies the links between adult obesity and other medical issues with early childhood trauma. This works very much in with the Community Commission and what they're doing, and we think it's really leading-edge kind of work. We're also having Dr. Linda Chamberlain, who will share her leading-edge research on adolescent brain development and link it with Dr. Faletti's research. And in the afternoon, we'll be having a similar format to, that we had last year, where we will be involving our community leaders and what we can do to bring some of this research into practice here within our county. So we're really excited. We didn't think we could top last year, but we think we are doing a pretty good job of that. That is also, we're also, the Ventura County Community Foundation's Leadership Academy is also coming on as a cosponsor. And they're going to be having an art exhibit done by middle school children, and that art will be auctioned off through a silent auction, and the proceeds from that will be going to the children's charity of their choice. So we think that's kind of a nice addition to have too. So we're very excited about that. And again, First Five Ventura County and the Community Commission have signed on as collaborators. Another thing that we're doing with our tri-counties coalition is through funding from OCAP, we are looking to, looking at the capacity of our local child death review team, and we're doing that with San Luis Obispo and San Luis Obispo Counties. And they want a relationship between the teams. So we're a part of that process, and that's a process we haven't been part of before. So we're very excited about that. That's something new for us. So, any questions?
No questions on the work of the partnership. Supervisor Bennett?
Not a question, just, it's a great work, and I've had the opportunity to get to watch you in action some, and we're very fortunate to have you helping with all of this stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your continued support.
We have, as, we often use the word "safety net" for the work that we do as a county agency, but our partnerships with so many of everyone on this list and the work that's done by the partnership just takes and strengthens that safety net tremendously in our county and does services and linkages well beyond what we could ever do with the few dollars we are always challenged to make sure we use wisely. So I appreciate your work immensely and appreciate that you provide this annual report to us, Mr. Friedlander. Thank you. And please thank the partnership.
I will do, thank you.
Thank you. So receiving foul action, Board?
Second.
Motion, a second, to receive the annual report. And thank you so much. No objection to that, so ordered. Next, we have an opportunity, and Supervisor Bennett's going to introduce this.
Great, thank you very much. I'm really excited that we've gotten to this part of the program, and so I'm going to ask Wally McCall. I'm going to also ask All-State Agent John Maggio to come forwards as I make my comments. Is Mr. Maggio here? Here he is, I see that. And I'm going to start this off with something different than the resolution. And I have to tell you, just a few months after I was elected to the Board of Supervisors, I was in that learning curve. I was going to conferences and attending, you know, everything I could and trying to soak everything up. And I'm at this conference up in Northern California, and it is a meeting of all these fire officials from around the state and around the nation. And they start describing this program. They said, "There's this great program. It's probably the best program that they know of in the country." And they were on and on describing this program, and I'm sitting there. And then I literally fell off my chair when they said, "It's the CREW in Ojai cutting fire trails." And I knew about the CREW, but I was so close to it that I didn't have it in perspective. I mean, I've worked in Ojai, at Norodoff, and I just, you know, "Yeah, we've got the CREW, and that's nice," et cetera. And it really heightened my attention to just how unusual and incredible this organization is. And so because of that, I'm going to read this resolution, but I would offer, because of the tremendous firework, the reason I asked the All-State Agent, Mr. Maggio, to come down is they think so much of what the CREW's work has done up in the Ojai Valley that they've awarded the CREW a, just awarded a CREW a check for $25,000. And I think total, they've awarded $47,000, I believe, to the CREW. So normally, I don't read the whole resolution, as most of you know, but this time I am, because this is an organization that's on a roll, really doing great work, and I think it's important for us to hear about that. And so, "This is honoring the CREW for the environmental and economic leadership. Whereas the concerned resource and environmental workers, the CREW has received the State of California's highest honor by receiving the Governor's Award for Environmental and Economic Leadership in recognition of their outstanding accomplishments in the field of environmental and economic leadership. And the CREW is a nonprofit youth leadership and employment organization founded in 1991 targeting low-income youth aged 14 to 21, serving 160 youths annually in carrying out youth employment, job training, habitat restoration, trail building, and fire protection. The CREW's established partnerships with the County Fire District, U.S. Forest Service, State Department of Forestry, Fire Protection, and they've resulted in the implementation of vital fire protection projects to protect the residents of Ventura County. The CREW's carried out innumerable projects of trail restoration, disaster recovery, habitat restoration, flood protection, and other projects that have greatly benefited the residents and environment of Ventura County. The CREW's provided jobs and job training, leadership, and environmental education to hundreds of youth, many of whom have gone on to pursue seasonal and career employment and college educations in natural resource fields. And the Board of Supervisors wishes to specially recognize and commend the dedication, determination, innovation, and great success of the CREW's highly talented Chief Executive Officer, Wally McCall, and thank Mr. McCall for the contributions he and the CREW Board have made to the youth, the environment, and citizens of Ventura County. And further recognize Mr. McCall's success in developing the CREW from a fledgling local nonprofit into an organization operating in multiple counties with hundreds of youth and strategic partnerships, and state, local, and nonprofit agencies all helping, and federal agencies. So therefore, be it resolved that the County Board of Supervisors heartily and enthusiastically concurs with the Governor of California that the CREW is an outstanding organization of statewide merit that's made lasting and significant contributions to citizens and the environment of the County of Ventura, the State of California. And the Board of Supervisors looks forward to future collaborations with the CREW and wishes them continued growth and success." The only other thing I would just point out to you is this, this award was given in December. The CREW could easily have rested on their laurels with that award, but instead, when the flood hit, and we have over 100 homes that have been flooded out in the Ojai Valley, what you see the CREW doing is showing up every day, working, helping people literally muck out the mud in their homes. And if you had to pick a job that you didn't want to do day in and day out, that's mucking mud out of people's homes, just in terms of the backbreaking work that's involved. It's discouraging work. You muck it out, it oozes back in, and it has been a real pleasure to get to know the CREW members better as we've interfaced with them in this, in this effort to help the citizens and to get to talk to these youth and realize the kind of young people that you, Wally, and your organization are touching and the kind of leadership that you're inspiring. I mean, you can see the sense of pride. These kids walk taller after they finish that kind of work. And the final thing, just, they, in Casita Springs, the Oakview Women's Club provided lunch every day for all the workers. And when they had all the CREW members down there, and one time somebody stopped and just thanked those CREW members, and you just saw, you know, 16-year-old girl who's in a continuation school environment and was, you know, was having trouble sort of making it, she sat taller in that chair, and she went out, and she went right back to work. And I'm just really stoked about what you're doing. So congratulations. I'd like to come down and present this to you and invite both of you to make comments to the Board here at this point in time. Thank you.
Well, I'm very happy and proud on behalf of Allstate and the Allstate Foundation to be here and to present, Wally, with this check. The CREW, I'm an Allstate Agent in Ojai, and I know firsthand the good works that they do from personal experience with my own son and with many fellow community members that I know of that they've done wonderful work with. They've also created and cleared a lot of brush, because as you know, Ojai is in a, in a kind of a unique situation with the forest, and it's vital, vital work that they do. I'm very happy and proud. Thank you.
All right. Wally?
Okay.
He's got one of those big things.
I'm Wally McCall. Did you want to present that?
Yeah. There you go, Wally. Get right to the mic.
I'm Wally McCall. I'm the CEO of the CREW. But before I proceed to wear the leg off the cast iron stove, as I've been known to do, I'd like to introduce two really vital Board members, Jim Clark, who's a long-term President of the CREW, and Todd Kelly, who's been on the, Vice President of the CREW, has been on the Board for 10 years. And I probably blushed when you were talking then, because I realized that I've been a little selfish, and I could not have done it without these two guys here.
Yeah.
I also want to introduce our entire staff, Stephanie Sulkin. We managed to do this with two full-time people, which I think goes to show that you can run an efficient nonprofit. And finally, I want to thank Kathy, and John, and Steve, the people who've really been the support for this little renaissance that's taken place. And especially also Chief Rob Rover from the Fire Agency, who has helped us enormously in attempting to do so. So thank you very much.
Please.
The CREW's and the business have given jobs to kids. We've got 120 to 150 kids each year working for us, doing vital work. The work is meaningful. The kids walk tall, because it doesn't matter whether they get paid minimum wage, it doesn't matter whether the work they do is backbreaking, and both are true. It's meaningful work. They know that when they cut that fuel break, or when they clean the mud out of someone's home, or when they repair a trail, or do habitat restoration, they know it's important work. And, and that's essentially what we're doing. We're not psychologizing the kids so much as we are, as given the opportunity to reach the bar that we put up here, and they always reach it, because fundamentally, they're good kids and they deserve this opportunity. And we thank you for enabling us in meeting that goal. Thanks.
Thank you for your good work and for inspiring those kids to reach their goal. I have seen them at work on trails and other, other areas in the community, and it is, it really lifts your spirits. Thank you so much for your good, hard work and leadership and your accomplishments. Thank you so much. Okay, we've got a few minutes left here. We're going to move to the next 9:30 time certain item, which is mine, and it is a proclamation on behalf of the Board acknowledging the month of February is National Parent Leadership Month. And I know I have here in the audience folks who recognize, I know, I believe we have participants in the Parents with Purpose program in the audience. Karina Arenas is present. If you would please step forward, those who are present. Karina volunteers in the Santa Paula Tattoo Removal Clinic also, and Elizabeth Humphrey, if she's, she had to go to school. Maria Marino?
She's not going to be here.
Michelle Rodriguez?
She's in.
Okay. They're off doing things, that's good. And I'd like to invite the Agency Director, Ted Myers, is present, if he's present. There's Ted. And I know that other staff who work with our, with our parents. Keet Nicole, Lori Steinauer, Jane Reiman. Social workers are, these are social workers representatives from both Ventura and Oxnard offices and the Ventura County Children and Family Services. And this is a proclamation that really addresses meaningful parent leadership, where parents gain the knowledge and the skills necessary to function in meaningful leadership roles to present a parent voice that helps to shape the direction of their families, programs, and communities. It's a way of strengthening our families, preventing child abuse and neglect, working to recognize the extraordinary courage and tenacity of parents who have reached out to make improvements in their families and their community, and to really look at having effective families, strengthening and family support programs that go along with the policy and the practices that build stronger and safer communities and for our children in our county. The Parents with Purpose is comprised of parents who have previously lost their children to the child welfare system and then successfully worked their plans to get their children back, and now serve as mentors and a referral source to parents who have recently lost their children to the system and need support and guidance. And the work that is undertaken by the Parents with Purpose crosses all boundaries in that it really reaches out to, to parents who just need that little extra encouragement or mentorship or guidance to, to take on a role that is very daunting. As we, I expect as parents, many of you have said at some point or another in your life, this didn't come with a book. You know, when that child is all of a sudden acting out, and you're saying, "Wait a minute, where's the, where's the book that tells me how to deal with this?" These parents have really taken leadership roles to, to help write the book, and I think to help our, our families and our communities and help one another. So it's with pleasure that I'll bring this proclamation down on behalf of the Board that declares February is National Parent Leadership Month, asking all county residents to appreciate and support the vital leadership and role that parents have every day in shaping children who are the future of our communities, and to recognize the value of their work and the many partnerships that lend support to parents, including our wonderful social workers and our Human Service Agency too, and celebrating the success of parenthood. And Mr. Myers, I'll step down if you would.
Thank you for those kind words. There's no doubt that parents hold our future in their hands. Children are our future, and it did not come with an instruction manual, as Supervisor Long said. So sometimes we stumble, but everyone stumbles in life, and a helping hand is all we need sometimes to get back on, on the right track. I'd like to introduce Jane Reiman, who is our Agency Leader for the Parent Leadership Project, and she'll introduce Karina.
Good morning, everyone. I'm very honored to be here to introduce Karina. The parent leadership groups started in 2001, and we started with about 18 parents. These were people who had been in the recovery community, who wanted to help other parents who had gone through our system. We're now down to about four, and we're recruiting for more parents. But these four task force members are mighty four. We have Elizabeth, who represents Ventura in Washington, DC, as a parent expert, and she has participated in several conferences there. And we have Maria, who was mentioned before, who was our state representative, and she travels to Sacramento to represent Ventura County. And she is a mighty spark of a lady, I'll tell you. I'm sorry she couldn't be here. Karina, as was mentioned before, is, she's not just a, a part of the recovery community. She has a wonderful sober living home for women. she has a wonderful sober living home for women, Babasha's Angels. And she represents these parents who have come through this system and not just helped the other parents, but helped us as staff members. They've helped train our social workers so that our social workers know how it is to be on the other side of that door when we knock. And it's a pretty scary place to be. So they're there to help those parents through that and they're there to help us be sensitive to how it feels on the other side. So I just admire these folks so much and salute them. And Kate Nicole has been with this group and really heading up this group since the beginning. She's a supervisor as well at Children's Services. And Lori Steinhauser from ASPRA has been with us and helping us get the group going every week. And we hope that we are going to have some more folks coming in and participating in decision-making groups, on-county decision-making task forces, so that parents have a say in what happens here in Ventura County. So here is Karina.
Good morning. I feel very honored to be here this morning in front of you and I want to thank you for recognizing us. It was a hard road to, you know, lose my kids and to try to get them back. And I have them all back and you see them running around over here. Sorry about that. But, you know, like they said, we don't have a parent book. But I don't know if you remember me, Supervisor Flynn. I'm Gloria's daughter and you helped us with my sister and I appreciate that and thank you very much. And in honor of my sister, I did open up two homes now. Thank God I have two. And I have 17 women in there and nine of them are trying to get their kids back or, you know, trying to be those parents. And two of them hopefully will have them back in July and then they will be in front of you also, helping us here to, you know, go out there in the community because it is a scary part when our kids are taken away and when we don't accept responsibility for our actions because I did have some actions that were not good choices. But when I did get my kids back and I found out about this, I knew that this was something that I wanted to do because it is scary and, you know, we get intimidated, we have fear and stuff. But I know that if I can do it, anybody can do it because I don't come from a very good background, not because of my choices, not because of anybody else's choices, because I have a very wonderful, loving mother that has a very good heart. They gave me her heart to be able to do what I'm doing today and I want to recognize her too. But I really appreciate being here. You know, and I owe this all to my sister because I know that if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be standing here right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
This has truly been family morning for the board. Speaks to what we do as a core, I think, for what we do in our community, what our responsibilities in our community are to support and encourage children and families and to help them to have a better road. So we thank you for being here so much and thank the board for acknowledging the parents in our community and the children and the good work that we do. This time we'll move to our next 10:00 AM time certain, a little bit late, but appreciate the patience of those here to provide the next item, and that is our airport administrator. We'll give a minute for the room to clear. I expect you need to set up some things too, Scott. Scott Smith will present the Oxnard Airport Master Plan and Minigated Negative Declaration. And the board has received those items in advance of this and appreciate that you will provide us the highlights of this excellent plan. Thank you. Mr. Smith, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnston, we're pleased to be back before you with a master plan for your consideration for the Oxnard Airport, along with an accompanying environmental document. I have some help here today. We have prepared a summary type of presentation for you to give you the highlights of the plan as well as the environmental document. And didn't plan to walk you through the staff report. We're fully prepared to address any issues that you may have or questions you may have. But if it pleased the board, we'd like to go ahead and go through the presentation. And I'd like to call up Mr. Jim Harris, who's with Kaufman Associates. And Jim has worked on this master plan with us as well as the previous versions, so he's very familiar with it, and he'll walk us through the slides.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I will try to move through this very quickly and just give you an overview of the highlights of the master plan. First of all, of course, as you all know, your airport at Oxnard has some challenges in the sense that it's dealing with a limited amount of acreage to deal with, obviously 216 acres. So the challenge, of course, was to address a lot of the FAA issues as well as own local concerns as far as how the planning, the update of the plan, which again would be a 20-year master planning document, would address the future of the airport. Several purposes of the master plan were established early on in this process and certainly I won't try to take you through all of the items, but the primary purpose is to provide the public officials in the community with guidance for future development, a way to address the aviation demand, compatibility with the environment, and incorporation of the airport mission statement, which became a fundamental underlying theme of the entire plan. Again, one of the things we want to do is reexamine the direction of the 1996 draft master planning effort. If there were valid concepts, we wanted to retain those. New concepts were also developed and we also discarded invalid or unworkable concepts and also compared the overall plan to the 1983 plan that had been previously developed. Final goal of the project was to develop a plan, a comprehensive plan, that supports and balances the opportunity for aviation activities, but very importantly, balances also the environmental preservation of the surrounding area. Through the development of the plan, there was a very extensive outreach program that was developed to make sure that we had plenty of opportunity in the plan besides ourself. We had various stakeholders. We had a fairly large planning advisory committee, certainly the FAA, state and city representatives, opportunities for public input. All of that was very important to the final recommendations of the plan and certainly helps drive the recommendations and some of the conclusions. Something else that took place through this plan to further provide more extensive outreach was the master plan was placed on our company's website linked to the county so that the community had access to the plan as it was being prepared, essentially 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so they could access the material and comment at any given time. I won't take you through all the elements either of the mission statement, but certainly the Department of Airports has a mission statement which is outlined here on this particular chart, as well as Oxnard's airport mission statement. All of these, in fact, these were reviewed with the committee. Every time we met, we reviewed all of the statements and made sure that everyone was understanding of what were the underlying goals of the master plan. These were all developed, obviously, previous to the master plan being developed, but became a framework for the master plan. The study began with the inventory of the existing facilities. Again, I won't take you through any of the highlights about the airport, you're very familiar with it, but obviously a single runway facility. We did an update of all the existing facilities and the present standards and how they were met, FAA standards, I should say, and whether or not they were met. And certainly looked at all of the landside facilities, all the structures, buildings, parking areas that were available when we started the study, so we had a good baseline from which to begin. A real key component was establishing the type of aircraft that would use the airport, both what are using it presently, what would use it in the future. Most importantly, we don't see a change in the role of the airport or the character of the airport. We see that remaining the same in the types of aircraft. These are referred to as Airport Reference Code. They establish the design standards of the airport. And of course, as you know, the airport serves a wide variety of aircraft, from the very small, single-engine, fixed-wing aircraft to some of the larger corporate aircraft that use the airport, as well as the commuter aircraft providing passenger service. The forecasts were developed both from a based aircraft, looking at how many aircraft will be there in the future. There are approximately 142, 142-based aircraft. We see that growing to about 170-based aircraft over the 20-year planning period that we were dealing with. We also looked at operations forecasts. We looked at the number of aircraft that we expected to execute takeoff and landings at the airport. Presently, there are about 78,000 takeoff and landings by general aviation aircraft. You also have some commercial service commuter aircraft. We expect that number to grow to about 92,000 takeoff and landings by the end of the 20-year planning period. Comparatively, you can look at the 1983 plan, which is illustrated in the middle line. You can see the levels that were projected back then in terms of operational levels. You see the 96 plan up in the purple line and you see this plan currently represented by the yellow line of the graph. So obviously, the operational levels are less than in either of the two previous plans. The in-plane passengers, this is a historical perspective of in-plane passengers or passenger boardings out at the airport, and you can see that's fluctuated from just over 10,000 passenger boardings to up to between 45,000 and 50,000 passenger boardings. All of this has been affected by change in the airlines, change in the economy, a number of variables that affected the growth of passenger activity. And you can see over the last few years now, it's starting to grow back again after a slide, which obviously was affected by the 9/11 incident. Most importantly, when we looked at the commuter industry, we looked at historically what's happening and in the future, what FAA is predicting for the future of the commuter industry. It is a rapidly growing industry and you can see by the charts here, this is FAA's forecast of what's expected in passengers. There is a fairly robust growth in passenger activity in the commuter industry that's expected over the next, FAA's forecasting period is 12 years, and that's what they look at. But also the fleet mix that's used by the commuters, you can see that what we're seeing is some larger seating sizes and changes of fleet mix over the years. We tried to take a look at the factors that might play a role here at Oxnard. The employment forecast, we looked at several different forecasts, several different methodologies. Again, you saw this chart earlier, but then we did select a forecast which we felt was fairly reasonable and that was growing from about, currently I think there was about 22,000 passenger employments or boardings. We feel that that number, probably a realistic number, is growing to about 60,000 passengers on an annual basis over 20 years. And as you recall, that's, again, some of the high points back around 1990, where just under 50,000. Again, here's a comparison from the 83 plan shown here, the 96 plan shown here, and the current plan before you, shown in the yellow line, which again is considerably less in the long-term growth. Finally, these are the summaries of the numbers, as I mentioned. The based aircraft growing from 142 to 170-based aircraft and the employment growth to 60,000. Operationally, total operations growing from around 88,000 takeoff and landings to about 115,000 takeoff and landings. We did look at the capacity of the airfield to see if there was going to be any shortfall in capacity and we found that what's measured in terms of capacity is called the annual service volume. That essentially is saying that the airport can handle somewhere without significant delays on the order of around 150,000 takeoff and landings before significant delays occur, which again is well short of what's projected in terms of forecast activity. So we don't see a capacity issue at all. The facility requirements are driven by the forecast that we talked about. From an airfield standpoint, the runway standpoint, we don't really see any changes. We see that essentially remaining the same. Probably the biggest thing we addressed here was an instrument approach from the West, looking at enhancing the capability of an instrument approach from the West. And we also addressed some of the current FAA design standards, which I'll talk about in just a moment. But other than that, no future changes. From a landside, more the hangars and ramp area, we, again, because the based aircraft are not growing much, we see more of a redevelopment of existing facilities than we do see in terms of added facilities, new hangars replacing old hangars, et cetera. We feel that those are probably the primary issues that will be dealt with in the plan, which we'll touch upon here in just a moment. The recommended improvements, basically centered around three areas, the airfield, as I mentioned, the runway design standards are all new FAA design standards, which had to be applied and looked at, a blast pad on the runway 2.5 end just for erosion protection, and then the improved instrument approach, as I mentioned, on runway 7. Terminal considerations were more addressing security issues, efficiency, and actually moving the rental cars off an aircraft ramp, which has currently been finished. So that actually is done now. And again, general aviation is more of a redevelopment and modernization of the FBO hangar area. The recommended plan, as you'll see here, what you're really seeing here more are some of the land issues. And the areas in blue are the land that you basically have under navigation easement presently, certainly the area inside the property line. The area in yellow here is area that will have to be purchased for some, under FEES simple, for protection of the object-free areas, which are an FAA design standard, and also acquiring some easements out through this area to make sure that these areas are protected as well to meet the design standards. The slightly larger runway protection zone off here is to accommodate the improved instrument approach, as I mentioned, and also an approach lighting system from the West. The safety zones and property control, as I mentioned, are driven by a couple different areas. It's a runway safety area, called an RSA, and an object-free area. And you can see these areas centered about the runway environment and these are all highlighted and just kind of a continuation of what I was referring to earlier under property control. The runway safety area issue is something that FAA has put a very strong emphasis on over the last few years, and that's controlling your runway safety areas. Off the west end, well, you're supposed to have 1,000 feet from your threshold in the safety area. And off the west end, you see you have the 1,000 feet, so we don't see any changes on the west end. On the east end, it's slightly different. You only have about 750 feet of clear runway safety area. To accommodate that, to make sure we have the full 1,000 feet, what we're calling for is the runway threshold here is already displaced, but what we're saying is this 250 feet here cannot be used in calculations for takeoff to the east. So the takeoff calculations will be reduced by 250 feet, down to, it's presently 59, 50. So it's going to take that down to around 5,700 feet for departures to the east. That will provide the safety area under the FAA guidelines and is an acceptable method to do that. The terminal GA considerations, again, as I mentioned, this is the ramp areas, parking area has been moved down here. Again, modernization of the older buildings. There is some land allowable for future development, but that would have to be brought back before you if this is ever considered because it was just left as noted as available for future The capital program has been broken down into three distinct phases, short, intermediate, and long-term. We've really tried to put an emphasis on demand-based so that as activity levels grow, you look at the improvement programs. The overall capital program, and I again won't take you through it all, is broken into the total costs, FAA-eligible, and the airport share, the county share. The overall capital program is slightly over 16 million over the next 20 years. A majority of that, about 14-plus million, is FAA-eligible and the balance of it would be the airport or the county responsibility. That breaks down this way, and again, won't take you through all the numbers, but these are the costs that I talked about that add up to the 16 million. Which parts are grant-eligible? And of course, the airport, Oxnard receives AIP, or Airport Improvement Program entitlement funds, which would pay for a significant part of it each year. You do not receive any state funding. But as you go through your PFC program, look at- But as you go through your PFC program, look at the entitlement funds and what you might have to pick up in terms of a match. You can see in the short term, remaining CIP costs not covered by PFC or Airport Improvement Program funds is about $1 million. Nothing in the intermediate term, and in the final would be $400,000 worth of costs. So lion's share of the development costs are pretty fully covered under your current PFC program and the FAA grant program. Finally, I know I've gone through that very rapidly, but bottom line, again, I come back to the mission statement, one of the tests at the end of the program, did we fully meet the intent of the mission statement? And I feel that from our perspective, we did. I think from the committee's perspective, we did. And with that, I'll turn it back to Scott.
Thank you. Just a brief summary of the timeline and what we went through for the master plan itself. There's all the key dates, meetings, I wanted to highlight the fact that we went out to the community and met with the neighborhood council at Oxnard, as well as the Oxnard Shores Homeowners Association, and then held a public workshop in Oxnard, and then went through our review process with the Land Use Commission and Commission and Authority. The second part of this presentation is very brief, but has to do with the environmental review that's required under SEQA. Our strategy was to bring this forward as a mitigated negative declaration due to the nature of the master plan, where it just really shows growth in response to what's forecast nationwide, and there aren't any improvements, per se, in the master plan that would encourage growth. So to do the, just a very quick summary of the mitigated negative deck and what we went through, I'd like to call up Jana Mink, who we use as our environmental consultant. You may know Jana, she's now the Planning Director at the City of Santa Paula, a position she received since she did this work with us, and fortunately, they let her continue with us through this step. Jana?
Thank you, and good morning, Jana.
Hi, good mor—oh, sorry. Good morning, I'll be quite brief. As Scott indicated, we decided that the appropriate environmental document was a mitigated negative declaration, and we prepared in accordance with the County Administrative Guide on Preparing Environmental Documents, since Department of Airports is a county department. Next slide, please. What we determined was, as we were preparing the initial study, we came up with a mitigated negative declaration, and there's three issue areas that I'll go through very briefly. Cultural resources, just stay there, hazardous materials and transportation. Cultural resources involves the fact that there are several hangars out at the airport that are over 50 years old, and at this point, we're not sure if they can be retained, or they're so dilapidated that they just need to be acknowledged and removed. However, since they are potentially over 50 years old, they may be significant in some manner, so I wanted to ensure that there was some way to at least document it before anything happened to them. That's why we have a mitigation measure with cultural resources. Moving on to the next one, which is hazardous materials. The airport is located on a site identified by the County Environmental Health Department on the list of leaky underground fuel tanks. In 2002, a schedule was established to remediate the identified sites, and this work may actually go through, I guess, 2005 unless it's been completed. Okay. Therefore, we needed to obviously include that in our analysis of what's going on at the airport. So once again, we're just reflecting what's currently going on there, and included a mitigation measure to continue working with the Environmental Health Department to remediate the underground fuel tank situation. The next issue area was transportation, and the Oxnard Airport Master Plan update actually has a less-than-significant impact on a project-specific level. However, the potential for cumulative impacts requires mitigation in accordance with the county traffic impact mitigation fee. And as stated up there, it indicates when the fee would be required to be paid, which is at the time that any, I guess, permits for construction are undertaken by the Oxnard Airport area. And those were the three areas. Obviously, the Department of Airports has agreed to implement those mitigation measures as indicated, when they need to be done on those slides, as well as in the document itself. I guess the last slide just shows the timing of what we did, meaning that we started this process back in 2004, and it shows that we prepared the document, had it circulated. Due to some comments on transportation, we recirculated the document in November of last year and included a traffic update study, which resulted in the traffic impact fee payment mitigation measure. Obviously, we went to the hearings, and I'll turn it back over to Scott.
Thank you, Jana. One last remark on summarizing this, to be clear, that the master plan crafted around the mission statement does not anticipate improvements that would accommodate regional jet service, that were in the previous master plan that was sent back by your board for revisions. Specifically, doesn't contemplate any change in moving the displaced threshold at the east end toward, back toward the east to allow a longer landing distance, which will be necessary for regional jet service, as well as does not contemplate any expansions to the terminal or the circulation around the terminal that would, could conceivably have to happen in response to higher passenger demands than what is now forecast in this master plan. That is the end of the staff report, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions of staff? This is a public hearing, but let's have questions of staff first.
Yeah, I have a question. You somewhat emphasized a west approach from the west to the runway. Can you develop that a little bit more?
Yes, Supervisor. The idea for the west approach is really two-pronged. One is to permit during certain weather conditions, especially with high winds, to have an instrument approach that would get aircraft in from the west under the, with the same type of minimums that we see at the eastern approach to the airport. So when we have weather, planes could get in, and the airport would be more efficient. But there's also a second strategy there, and that's that often at nighttime, when we have arrivals, the winds calm down, that runway 7 landing from the west could be available if it had a better approach. And what that would do for us is give some options on landing in terms of noise abatement for the airport, where we have such a concentrated environment of community on the east end, and they right now are really, take the brunt of all the approaches. If we could get a precision approach at the west end, that would effectively be able to share that burden with a different segment of the community, which is more sparsely populated. That's the two strategic ideas for that approach.
Okay. I do have comments. You have more questions?
There aren't any other questions, but if I might open the public hearing, ask if there's anyone present in the public wish to speak to this item. I don't have cards submitted. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Supervisor Flynn.
Yes, before I begin, I want to impress upon everyone, especially board members, how great a staff we have running the airports. You've done an exceptional job. We don't have the numbers of complaints that we used to have. It's true that operations are down in Oxnard, but the airport director and the staff have been much more community-friendly, I think, and that's helped a lot in explaining to people why this happens or why that happens. But also, there is a cooperative approach on the, with the people that use the airport as far as curfew, kind of a voluntary type of curfew, which has worked very well. So I'm really pleased with the way it's operating. There is opposition to the airport, we know that, but there also is, are people who want the airport where it is. So we've got kind of those conflicting views, which you have helped out a lot, I think, Scott, with your leadership and your staff. We do have a number of touch-and-goes, however, that come from the Camarillo Airport. If we could take a look at that, see how many, and maybe bring about some kind of more cooperation between the two airports there. The other thing I would recommend is, in the mission statement, use the word "cooperation with the neighbors." I think cooperation and compatibility are two words that we use a lot at the Airport Authority meetings. But the Airport Authority, the Advisory Committee, and the staff really have come together to produce, I think, airport service to both the private pilots, general aviation people, and then the commercial service. Thank you. I move approval of the master plan.
And all the recommendations that go with it.
Okay, then there's a motion and a second for the recommendations 1 through 7 on the work that's been completed. Any objection to that motion? Further comments? Seeing none? So ordered. It has been excellent work. I too appreciate, sitting as Airport Authority, that the community engagement and outreach was successful in the sense of finding consensus wherever possible and bringing forward both a document that we will have to guide us through the next 20 years and successfully support the business of running the airport for the county and the taxpayers, and appreciate your good work on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and on behalf of my staff, thank you for the compliments.
You're welcome. Okay, we have some time left. Let's see what we can accomplish. Our next item is item 20, item 30, item 30. Mr. CEO. The item is item 30 before us, Mr. CEO, it's adoption of an ordinance establishing compensation for Board of Supervisors, feeling ordinance number 4191 and 4253. Mr. Johnson.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I put this item on, I apologize for its lapsing when it did. It is, and from my point of view, it's a matter of institutional maintenance. I know these, it's always awkward and a little uncomfortable when the board has to deal with such matters, but the one thing that we've been very successful at, I think, has been addressing this, starting with all our labor contracts and fully costing things, and this is one of the things which we need to proceed with. I'll be happy to address any questions you might have, but I would strongly encourage you to adopt the, or re-adopt the ordinance.
Any questions?
We're talking about the supervisor's ordinance, right?
Correct, item 30.
Yeah, you know, I had someone raise the question about parity, but parity, I don't think this is an example of parity, because parity implies equalization, and there's no equalization taking place with other Boards of Supervisors, I don't think. So that'd be one. Plus, it has a cap to it. So I want to remove that argument that one newspaper reporter asked me about. It looks like an example of parity. It is a formula, however, and formulas tend to be very controversial. Thanks.
Mr. Johnson, any further comment?
I'll be happy to comment on that. I mean, I think the comment in the newspaper was appropriate, or at least, you know, it was timely. We have made a concerted effort to deal with issues such as guaranteed parity, and I would suggest that the distinction here, although it's not a total distinction, but the clear distinction in my mind is, is that this is a situation where we are capping, you know, what can be provided, as opposed to putting a floor, which is what the parity formulas did. In addition to that, the parity formula was a contractual obligation with no ability of anybody then to change it, and it was a guarantee over some 60, 70% of our budget, which goes into salaries. This is not. There was also a matter, in my view, of where if the board granted parity formulas in contracts, there was nobody to sit and to be able to, how shall I say, to integrate that with your budget responsibility annually. This is a case not where you are, you should excuse the expression, abdicating your responsibility by using a parity formula and giving that authority away to labor unions and other individuals who might have an interest in the salaries. This is a case where you are relinquishing your ability to raise your own salaries, and there's a lengthy history that I'm sure anybody's interested in over the last 30 years, that my office, my predecessors in that office, spending a substantial amount of time working with the community and with Blue Ribbon Committees because of the controversy, and it was the citizens' recommendation of the Blue Ribbon Committee, as well as support from the Taxpayers Association, that this is an appropriate way in which to deal with a situation where by law, Boards of Supervisors set their own salary, and this was a way in which to contain boards from granting themselves unbridled increases, and at the same time, give somebody a standard by which to measure when they should occur. It's not a guarantee, and it's not a mandate.
Further comments? Supervisor Parks?
I'd just like to comment. I wasn't here when this was put together, but I do like the idea that the Citizens Advisory Committee is the one that made this recommendation. It allows a hands-off approach, just in terms of the Board of Supervisors and adjusting their own salaries. And I think also that it's kind of like, like the Board of Directors of an agency. In our, in our, in our life, our Board of Directors really is the citizens of the county, and for them to come together and form this committee to tell us what our pay should be, I think I can certainly honor that. And then it's up to each board member whether they want to take the raise or not, but I think it's an equitable way of doing it.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
It's a motion?
Second.
And a second, an objection to the motion? Seeing none? So ordered.
Title of the ordinance?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing compensation for the Board of Supervisors.
So ordered, thank you. Item 31, Mr. Bennett?
I just request that the Board appoint Deborah Steele to the Ventura County Commission for Women, so I'd like to move that action.
It's a motion and a second, an objection to the motion? Seeing none? So ordered. Item 32.
Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Ron Coons, Public Works Director. Item 32 is bringing this back before you, as I did last week, to give you an update on the construction contracts that we are letting, the emergency ones that I have let without going through the bidding procedures according to the government code when I find a state of emergency exists. In these cases, specifically for, I point out, South Mountain Road with A.J. Diani and Santa Ana Road with Union Engineering. To get those roads open immediately, we've taken immediate action to cut purchase orders to get the equipment out there and start work, following it up with construction contracts. These projects are estimated to be approximately a million each, and I find it is necessary to do this work so as to provide access for emergency vehicles, fire, sheriff, ambulance, and residents in the area there. There will be other contracts that I intend to be issuing in excess of $100,000 on other locations, and I will be reporting for emergency situations, and I will be reporting back to you each week as the code requires to do that. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to respond.
Questions?
I'll go ahead and second. Something I don't think we mentioned yet is how thankful we are that the President did go ahead and declare an emergency or disaster area for Ventura County also, so that we will be able to get some repayment for all this work that we're doing. And also, as we mentioned at the last meeting, how much we appreciate the Public Works Agency staff and crew out there that are working 24 hours around the clock to see that we can get these roads through. So thank you so much.
It's a motion and a second, an objection to the motion? Seeing none?
Keep up the good work and work fast.
Excellent work, yeah. Yeah, work fast. Our next item is item 33, and we're sitting as the Watership Protection District.
Similarly, on this item here, we have emergency contracts that I've issued. I want to point out Ventura River and Santa Ana Boulevard with Union Engineering, and also the Warring Debris Basin are the top two in this category. These are emergency contracts that I've issued to prevent flooding and further damage in the area, and I will be reporting back for this district as well for other contracts that I'll be letting for emergency bases.
Move the item?
Second.
It's a motion and a second, an objection to the motion? Hearing none? So ordered, thank you. Item 34, Water Works District, number one.
Chairman, members of the board, for item 34, where we need to protect or replace water lines that have been damaged, we've done emergency work there to restore potable water to the residents and also for their fire protection. And where there's sewer damage, we've also put in rock protection there to keep sewer spills from taking place and damaging the environment. Any questions? I'll be pleased.
It's not a question, just a comment. I mean, three of these going across the board. I think there are a lot of things about how, what happens during emergencies, what happens before emergencies and after emergencies that I hope we can look at, but one of the things I think does seem to be making sense is that we do have, our department heads do have the authority to get moving on the emergencies and then come and and keep us fully informed. So everybody can see, ultimately, it's a public process, but that they didn't waste time...critical time that you need for the benefit of the public. And so I do appreciate this process. I can look and clearly see exactly what we're spending the money on, et cetera, and they weren't hung up waiting for the board to get together before they started work on some things like Santa Ana Road, et cetera. So I move the recommended action.
I'll second, and also appreciation for the extra precautionary work that's here to repair a needed manhole area from against a potential sewage spill. We had an incredible amount of sewage spill over the storms throughout that area, so it's good to see some action. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none? So ordered. Thank you for your good work. Our next item is item 35, and we are sitting as Redevelopment Agency for the County of Ventura. And this is Report on Program Status and Accounting Transactions. And Monica Nolan, welcome.
Good morning, members of the board and Madam Chair. Before you is a request to make minor adjustments to the adopted RDA budget in order to bring it in line with current day actuals. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Other questions?
Move the item.
It's a motion.
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Seeing none? So ordered. Thank you so much. Item 36.
Chair members of the board, Mr. Johnson, again, Ron Coons, Public Works Director.
Wait a minute. Wait. Well, 36 would be...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're 37. I didn't see you with a different hat on there, Mr. Coons.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
Yes, good morning.
Mr. Johnson, Ken Kip from the Sheriff's Office. The item before you is a request to increase the sheriff's appropriation one time for $267,000 matched 100 percent by matching appropriations. The revenue source is the citizens' option for public safety, commonly referred to as COPS money. This is our eighth year participating in this program, in which the board approved in 1996 for the sheriff to participate in. It offsets...excuse me, I'm suffering from a cold here. Offsets maintenance projects inside the jail. The money's designed exclusively for the construction and maintenance of jail projects. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Seeing no objection to the motion? So ordered.
Thank you for being here and your patience.
Thank you. Item 37, which was the added item to our agenda. Mr. Coons.
Yes, Chair members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Ron Coons, Public Works Director. This item is added after the other agenda had been put together. This will take the needed action to enter into an agreement with NCRS to do work that's specified in here on five different locations, on Coyote Creek, Thatcher Creek, Fresno Creek, and Canata Larga Creek. We have district matching funds for this item here, and we have contracts...contractors lined up and California Conservation Corps lined up. We're trying to get these...this work done as soon as possible. We're unable to start the work until we have this agreement entered into so that we would be able to obtain the funding to do the work. So that's the urgency on getting this before your board. And I appreciate my staff working so hard on getting this put together after we got the call Friday afternoon to do it and come here before you today. We will also be working with NCRS on other projects and try to find out and obtain additional funding for those projects and get contracts or agreements with NCRS for those as well. If you have any questions, I'd be pleased to respond.
Any questions?
I don't suspect that you know the exact details of when each contractor's going to start right now, do you?
We're meeting on Coyote Creek. We're meeting with Cal Fran today. We've called one contractor, they were unable to have the equipment, so we're going with this contractor today to see if we can get the contract going.
How about Sieti Robles?
With Thatcher Creek, we have arrangements made with Union Engineering to pursue that, so we will be starting that. Fresno Creek...
Will you be starting that today, or do you know?
That's my question. When are you going to start on Thatcher Creek? I really don't expect you to have that level of detail. It's all moving so fast.
I would say within a week or so, we would be able to start that work. Fresno Creek is the same.
Okay. Your staff. It was not a fair question, quite frankly. I mean, this is all moving really fast in terms of when this happened. I would point out to the board, I had the pleasure of meeting with the residents of Coyote Creek last Wednesday, met with the residents of Sieti Robles Track on Saturday afternoon, about 40 residents there. They are obviously very anxious to get this work done before the next storm comes. And I just want to point out, it was late Friday night. In my office, and Watershed Protection District is calling me at about 6:30 or 7:00. They're still working. They're here late at night, getting the funding from Washington approved. Five minutes after that, I get the call about the President declaring the disaster. Right away, they have the game plan all put together. So literally, we called the meeting with the Sieti Robles residents Friday night at 7:30 for the next day at 3 o'clock. Now, that's not a bunch of government employees kind of all, you know, trying to take care of themselves and not work hard. That's a bunch of dedicated people that are here after hours, working hard. We could not have had that meeting with the residents on Saturday, and what they hope is that they can actually have somebody in there this afternoon in Thatcher Creek, but they can't do that until we take this action today. But, Mr. Coons, I hope you'll pass on to all those employees that have been working extra hours each week. It continues to impress us. The emergency in many people's minds sort of has passed with the dry skies, but the people that have to manage all of these different projects, we don't have any new staff, and they're juggling project after project after project. And it's very impressive, and so my thanks to your staff.
Thank you very much. And if there's any question any of you have during the week, just give me a call. I'll personally come and address those with you. Thank you.
I'd like to also offer appreciation. Staff has been outstanding. The emails we get, and I forward them, I immediately get a response that they've contacted the constituent, they've responded, they have, you know, the plans in place. It's been outstanding work. And Supervisor Bennett's right, it hasn't been because we've hired a whole bunch of new staff. I think part of it is because we have good relationships with contractors out there in the world who are able to respond to our call for action, and we're able to move these contracts and get the work underway rather than waiting, so.
Madam Chair, if I could, I have to tell the story also, because essentially, I told Mr. Johnson the story, and I haven't told...Mr. Coons, I want to say it public for anybody that's listening, particularly Watershed Protection. I was out at Sieti Robles Track, and there were 40 residents there. And they were delighted that some work is going to be starting on the channel above their homes, et cetera. But as always in these situations, there was one gentleman, and he was sort of in the back of the crowd, and he said, "Yeah," but he says, "You know, we had this tree that was in the channel, and it fell just as the rains were starting, and we called Watershed Protection District, and they came out, and they looked at it, and then they came out the next day, and they looked at it, and they came out the third day, and they looked at it, and they never did anything about it." And everybody kind of, you know, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, Watershed Protection District," and stuff, right? And so we went through the whole presentation and everything else with that sort of as this overtone out there. But when we got to the end of the other presentation, what we were able to reveal is that Watershed Protection District was continually going out because they're trying to find out whether they legally had the right to remove the tree. And when they went out, they found out that the tree looked like it was on private property. They had to come back, get all the survey information, check with county council, go back out again. They went out with a crane operator in case they could, and they found out it was on private property. They weren't able to move it. And so at the end of the meeting with these residents, and I said, you know, I said, "We started this meeting off, and this gentleman brought this issue up about Watershed Protection District." I said, "I'd like you to keep an open mind and listen to his comments in a different frame of mind." I said, "Your Watershed Protection District," as busy as they were, came out three days in a row to look at this tree. They were as frustrated as the resident was not being able to remove the tree. And I said, "So do you have a lazy Watershed Protection District that's just trying to frustrate citizens, or do you have a Watershed Protection District that's probably just as frustrated as citizens are with this, you know, wild combination of laws that we have that regulate what they can and can't do?" And so I said, "I think..."I said, "I'll tell you what I think. I think we've got a lot of hard-working people, and I hope the residents in Sieti Robles appreciate it." Well, this gentleman, who had just been lambasting Watershed Protection District, he says, "Well," he says, "Yeah, you're really right." He says, "They were even nice enough to call me at 2 o'clock in the morning to tell me," because he had left his home for vacation, "to tell me my house was in jeopardy of flooding and to get some friends in there to do something about it." He says, "I know they really are working hard." Now, that's just...that's just the exact same story, the exact same person, but it just depends on what kind of spend do you want to put on people in this situation, and I just hope all the citizens will try to give these workers a fair shake as they're trying to get the job done. Thanks a lot. I move the recommended action.
I'll second, but I'd also just like to comment that I realize that these things are emergency, and they have to be done quickly, and we're not going out to competitive bid. And one thing that gives me some solace in that is to see that we are using many different contractors, so it's not like everything's getting awarded to one contractor and they're benefiting the most, but that we're actually spreading that, and I think it allows for us to get some more competition in there, even though we don't go to competitive bidding. So I thank you for that.
It's a motion and a second. Any objection to the motion? Seeing none? So ordered. Thank you. Lots more work ahead. Thank you so much. Okay. Board members, that completes our agenda, except for our closed session, but we have an 11 o'clock APCD. Right? Right. I don't see anybody here, but we do have 11 o'clock APCD. So if we might, since we haven't had a break this morning, I've tasked you all. We'll take a break. We'll do 11 o'clock APCD, then we'll do closed session following that. Do we anticipate anything coming out of closed session?
We do not anticipate any announcements. I did have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Whether you want to convene the closed session at 1 o'clock as scheduled, or whether you wanted to start at a different time.
Oh. What's the board's pleasure?
I'd like to have it after the APCD adjourns.
Do we have standing committee? We have standing committee?
I don't think we do. I think it got canceled.
I thought I saw something was canceled.
No, I thought I saw it was on.
Right.
Okay.
So the discussion here, Supervisor Flynn, is that after APCD, we will come...go into closed session rather than wait till 1 o'clock for closed session.
Okay, that's right. Let me ask a question. Is there anything that we need to discuss today, or could it be done next week out of honor? Is it a big deal?
On closed session?
Well, that's a judgment ultimately that the board will have to make once you hear what it is we have to discuss. But I would suggest there are topics you need to hear about.
Okay, so we'll go into closed session as soon as we're finished with APCD then.
Thank you.
And there is not an anticipated announcement out of closed session. Thank you.[1438.33]